I would like to call this order the Monday, December 4th, six, actually, this is a 6:30, public hearing of the Quincy City Council to order. This is the public hearing for the FY 2024 property tax classification. And I'd like to present Colleen Healy, the Board of Assessors, to come to the mic. And you have the floor. Go right ahead.
Good evening, members of the city council. Before we can finalize the city's tax rate, all values, both real and personal, must be certified by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. I'd like to start tonight's meeting by thanking the staff of the Assessors Department as their hard work and dedication throughout the year make tonight's meeting possible. Tonight's agenda centers on voting on the minimum residential factor. This decision will dictate whether all five classes of property will be taxed at the same or different rates. You should already have our most recent Understanding Your Taxes publication, and this, along with a PowerPoint presentation, will be available on our website tomorrow Tonight, this body must decide whether to tax all classes of property at their full and fair cash valuation share of the tax levy, which would result in a single tax rate, or to reduce the share of the tax levy paid by the residential property owners and shift those taxes to the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers, which would result in a split tax rate. Since 1984, this council has voted to have a split tax rate. The assessors must classify all real property according to use as a January 1st. The four classes of property are residential, open space, commercial, and industrial. Just a reminder that anything used as a residential dwelling for human habitation is taxed at the residential tax rate, including apartment buildings. Personal property is a separate category and is treated as a class for purposes of allocating the tax levy. Personal property is classified based on the legal entity of the business, and all personal property is taxed at the commercial tax rate. Here you can see the total assessed value by class for fiscal year 2024. The residential class accounts for 86% of the total assessed value in the city, while 10% comes for the commercial class, 2% from the personal property, and less than one from the industrial. These two charts compare the total assessed value by class for the past five years. The residential class of properties continues to grow. This is a result of the current real estate market alongside development throughout the This chart depicts the increase in class from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24. This chart further breaks down the increase within each class code, comparing last year to fiscal year 24. Within the residential class of property, the highest increase was seen in the mixed-use class of properties. New growth is an increase in assessed value from the prior year resulting from new construction or physical improvements to a property. New growth also includes parcels that were previously exempt but have returned to the tax roll. Subdivisions and condo conversions are also considered new growth when it's first, the first time they are taxed as separate parcels. Listed to the right are some of the major improvements put on the tax roll for fiscal year 2024. This chart displays new growth in terms of tax dollars by class. Forty-seven percent of the total new growth is coming from the residential class of property; 53% came from the commercial, industrial, and personal property class. Our total new growth in tax dollars was 6.9 million. Assessors must analyze and gather sales data in order to assess each property and apply market adjustments to meet the certification standards established by the Department of Revenue. The sale prices of comparable properties that sold in close proximity to the assessment date are the primary indicators of property value. Fiscal year 2024 values were determined through analyzing sales that occurred during calendar year 2022. The chart shown reflects the single-family sales that occurred during calendar year 22, broken out by price point. As you can see, our highest volume of sales falls within a range of 600,000 to 800,000. I'd like to point out that there were only six sales under a purchase price of 400,000. These sales shown in the chart met the standard set by the Department of Revenue for an arm's length transaction. This data displays the median single-family sales price by neighborhood for calendar year 2022. The neighborhood with the highest median sale price was Squanum, with a median of 1 million, and the next being Quincy Center, with a median of 722,000. In analyzing our sales data, we saw that Wallaston has the highest volume of sales, with the next neighborhood being West Quincy. The median single-family home has assessed value of 616,200, which is a 7% increase from fiscal year 2023. If a residential factor of one was voted on by this body, then all classes of property will be taxed at the same rate, and the city of Quincy will have a single tax rate of $12.83. This means that each class of property will pay its full and fair cash valuation share of the tax levy, with both residential and commercial paying the same tax rate. If you turn to page 16 in our publication, we break out the math calculation for a single tax rate of $12.83. Tonight, your vote determines whether we adopt the minimum residential factor of .88, resulting in a residential tax rate of $11.27 for the residential class of property and 22.45 for the commercial class of property. And again, you can see the calculation for the split tax rate on page 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not want to speak and you would like to support Opposition Recorded, please sign in the sheet at the back table in the back of the chambers. If I could get a line to see how many folks are interested in speaking tonight. And go right ahead, go right forward. Please state your name and address. I'm going to give it a four-minute time limit, just because I think there'll be some folks in here, and there's some corresponding communications I have to read into the record after.
Good evening. My name's Mike Carter. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Cindy Roach Carter. We live at 5 Post Island Road, and we've been Quincy homeowners and taxpayers since our first little home in 1971. I submitted this letter to Council Demona and his colleagues. We believe strongly that Quarry Hills Associates' proposed 99-year lease extension, while currently in abeyance, will be brought forward again and is definitely a tax issue related to tax income. The lack of any public audit to establish QHA's fair tax burden and benefit to the city is troubling, and we feel it must be addressed as soon as possible. We are requesting further that Council Kane, per his leadership role in the Oversight Committee, hold a public hearing to establish the Quarry Hills Advisory Committee, as required in the current lease, and to monitor tax income in that current lease and for any future lease considerations. We ask that our comments be entered into the record for this public hearing. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And folks, if you could leave, Mike did a really good job with leaving and pertaining it to the tax rate. So if folks want to move forward, just pertain it to the tax rate that we have in front of us tonight. Thank you. Go right ahead.
I'm Anna Lee Johnson. I reside at 36 Garfield Street in Quincy. I would like to second what Mr. Carter just said on behalf of the Quarry Hills citizens as advocates. So I would like to, not to repeat it, but just second that. I'm also addressing the issue that Brian Palmucci, our councillor, prior to present board councillor, he introduced an order at the council by, and it was approved by, where a special residential rate be set for homeowners who have lived in their own residences like Mike for more than 40, 50 years. I have lived on 36 Garfield Street for more than about 60 years. And some cities and towns have a special rate for people such as myself and elderly who are living in their single-family home and maybe just two units. I think Attorney Palmucci said it could be two family. So special rate, many, many cities and towns have that special rate for people such as myself. And I Google them, Cambridge, which one, one of them. So that was approved by the council, that ordinance, but it was then denied by mayor because he said, "We cannot afford it." But Attorney Palmucci proved that we can recoup that money that we give seniors as a rate is by assessing all these apartment buildings as a commercial instead of residential. For instance, at the Quarry Hills, the Q Apartments, there are almost 300 units there, and more are coming as the state mandates that we establish small, densely transit-oriented developments near the transit stations. So there's an awful lot of apartments that are assessed at residential rate, and that's not seem to be fair. They are truly a business. They are commercial operations. They are now no longer resident, they're not residential, they are apartments. This is what Brian Palmucci said, and he had documented that, and you approved that, and it was again denied. So I would like you to reconsider what Attorney Palmucci had, you had records of that, and bring it up to the audience committee to address that issue again. Thank you very much.
Next person, Bill Zamsau.
Bill Zamsau, 356 Washington Street. Oh darn. Somehow or another, I got everything a little out of order. I'm sorry. Okay. Tonight, you all will be approving, likely approving, the tax rates needed to duly fund what looks to be at least a 21st century record city budget spending increase of $36 million, or an also record spending increase of 9.7% from last year, which itself was a, which itself was a near previous record increase of 6.8%. This spending increase outstrips the rate of inflation going away, and so only worsens the city's ongoing structural deficit, as well as outspending most other comparable Massachusetts municipalities going away. How out of control is city spending? For but an example, for the second year in a row, the Koch administration has failed to see its spending certified by the Department of Revenue as regards free cash. These fails are inexcusable. Not only have many, to most other municipalities already seen their free cash certified, the city of Quincy relies on a highly-developed software package that can calculate budget-line balances in literally nanoseconds, if that is, account data are duly entered and in a timely manner. Further embarrassing, the administration has had to rely on an outside vendor to help it with the certification. But that hasn't happened. They've been five, they were five months late last year, and I expect about the same this year. In any event, what we're looking at is an 8.3 spending increase in 2024, which ironically is close to my 8.5 median expectation that I'm on record as making last summer. Soaring debt service expense care of Maricoch scoring approval of close to three-quarters of a billion in city debt over the past few years is the single largest cause of record-breaking 2024 spending, and it's only going to get worse. In turn, the city's burgeoning debt load has raised concerns by S&amp;P, and which has already cut the city's credit rating 18 months ago, something which the administration's been loath to acknowledge. And as for what is more specifically on for tonight, but a few questions, examples of lowlights follow. For starters, what's up with the Quincy Center district improvement fund finances? Data are scarce, but what can be found and projected suggests the DIF is running a couple million to upwards of $5 million in the red this year. If such is the case, taxpayers are on the hook to cover this shortfall, even if the DIF is supposed to be self-funding care of new development. But what has not been happening is, which is likely not to continue to not happen until most of the DIF debt is paid down around 2050. Next up, Maricoch's tapping of the rainy day stabilization fund to trim the tax levy this year. As was the case last year, such is probably a bridge loan from stabilization until FY 2023 free cash is certified, and the likely, and the loan can likely then be reimbursed, or at least mostly, when, because last year, when free cash was certified, reimbursement came in around a million short. In any event, the mayor is opposing to take down stabilization, down to roughly, by roughly a third, to an amount that is only 30% of what it should be per the low end of best-practice expectations, and will still be less than half of what it should be when FY 2023-
Bill, we're at the four-minute mark. I'm going to give you 30 extra seconds. Go right ahead.
It's 405 million. I'll finish up as quickly as I can. Free cash, what free cash is, but not to worry. Today's National Cookie Day, so why not tap the cookie jar that is stabilization to cover the administration's failure to see free cash certified in a timely manner? Next up, is Maricoch's proposed voting, voiding of the $5,250,000 budget appropriation to the Pension Obligation Bond Reserve Fund? I've read the POBs indenture, and it clearly requires that the city of Quincy deposit at least $5 million a year into this reserve so as to sure payment on the POB debt until the balance hits 30 million, and that these funds must stay put until the late 2030s, when the 475 million in POB debt is considerably paid down. Accordingly, you all need to confirm, hard confirm, that the $5 million is paid, is necessary or not in the upcoming year, or you're going to risk defaulting on the bond indenture. And you also may get in trouble if you're treating this cancellation with a plan to reimburse it when free cash is certified at some date unknown. Next up-
All right, Bill, we're at the five-and-a-half-minute mark.
That's fine, but I'll wrap it up. I've got about two paragraphs to go. Next up, to trim the average residential property bill by a measly $37, the mayor has proposed to tap a million and a half from the woefully underfunded Open Stabilization Reserve Fund to trim, then trim the 2024 budget healthcare line. So what for the fact that the million and a half was set aside to mitigate future pain covering the near $600 million unfunded net for POB? Well, I could go on and on and on and drive Noel crazy. I'll sum up by noting that the administration's all but mugging Peter to pay Paulo concurrently playing the shell game. That, and shame on most of you, because you have been enabling this spending. It's out of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Also have a communications via, oh, there's two more. Go right ahead. That's why we have Bill.
So Mike, John Carr, 191 C Street. Mine is more of a cursory observation. I wish I had done a little bit more research, but I just found out about this meeting today. But I've noticed over the last couple of years, despite our mil rates, the tax rates being rather competitive, not coincidentally, at least in my case, I can't speak for everyone, it results in an exact 10% net expenditure increase in my taxes, effective taxes. That's two years in a row, not 10.1, not 9.9, 10. Effectively, every seven years at 10%, that means my taxes will double. So I just wanted to speak in favor of the lower bifurcated rate, please.
Betty Lowe, 140 Quincy Avenue, also speaking in support of the bifurcated rate and really whatever gets my residential tax rate as low as possible. My concern with any kind of increases to the property tax rate is, I'm not sure that the administration has handled our money prudently in the past. You know, going forward, maybe that'll change with a new term. I'm thinking specifically about what happened a few years back with the city pension scam in which we, in which the city pension management board was tricked into wiring $2.5 million to an account in Hong Kong, never to be seen again, and the board was kept from appearing before this body to answer questions before the public. So, you know, keep the tax rate as low as possible. If that means the bifurcated rate, then vote for that, and, you know, hopefully that that $2 million, $2.5 million scam was a wake-up call for the administration. It certainly was for me as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Maggie McKee, I live on Rossin Road in Quincy in Wallaston. First off, I'd like to say how happy I am and grateful I am for this opportunity for a public hearing. I think our democracy is strengthened, and we have the opportunity to weigh in on the decisions that are made in the city. Secondly, I'd like to say that I am happy to pay taxes in general, since my taxes, along with all my neighbors, fund crucial city services like schools. The cost of these services, along with that of everything else in the budget, in turn helps determine how much we pay in taxes. I am concerned that the city is spending too much on some things, specifically land and building purchases that raise our taxes unnecessarily. For example, The Patriot Ledger recently reported that the city is buying through eminent domain 119 Parking Way, the site of the IHOP restaurant, for $9.45 million. The story says that property is owned by real estate developers Alex Matov and Adrian Shapiro. The Ledger story says, quote, "In 2014, Shapiro and Matov also bought the neighboring property 100 Parking Way, which they sold in 2019 to the city for $9.25 million, more than doubling their investment." So the property purchases have definitely benefited the developers who sold to the city. Fair enough, but what will us taxpayers get out of the deal? According to the Ledger, another company, Atlantic Development, plans to build 300 apartments on the two Parking Way properties, along with an eight-story garage and retail space. Our area is afflicted by a housing crisis, so more housing could be very useful. But I have to wonder if the city truly needed to insert itself into these deals, and is the city choosing to develop properties based solely on the best interest of taxpayers? The state's database of campaign contributions shows that the developers Alex Matov and Adrian Shapiro have given some members of the city council and the mayor a total of $74,550, starting about nine years ago. The database shows people sharing their address and surname have given an additional $70,000, and people listed as Matov and Shapiro's business partners on the Massachusetts Corporations Division website have contributed another $80,400, with an additional $44,750 coming from those sharing their surnames and addresses. In total, folks associated with the developers behind the IHOP property sale have contributed $269,700 to Quincy politicians since December 2014. Developers and their family members are allowed to donate to politicians within limits set by the state, but I believe the existence of such sizable donations presents at least the appearance of a conflict of interest. I came here tonight to ask you, ask that you, our representatives, keep taxpayers' interests at the front of your minds when considering these property deals, because we are the ones paying for them.
Any other public hearing, public comment? Okay, one more communications we have from Lori Earl from 118 Billing Street, request the re-establishment of the Quarry Hills Advisory Committee to monitor the tax income. So I thank you for putting that into the record. I see her here tonight. Thank you, Lori. Seeing no further public comment, I will close this public hearing at 6:59 PM. I would like to call the order the Monday, December 4th. It is now 7:00 PM, public hearing of the city council to order for the council orders, and I'll read them into the record, and then I'll allow Jim Fatsis to come in. We have 2023-111, that's an order, discontinue a portion of Parking Way from Walter Hannan Parkway to Dead End. 2023-112, order, acceptance of General James C. McConville Way layout as a public right-of-way. 2023-113, order, acceptance of Walter J. Hannan Parkway layout from Parking Way to Ross, former Ross Way as a public right-of-way. And 2023-114, order, acceptance of General Joseph F. Dunford Drive layout as a public right-of-way. I'd like to bring to the podium here our planning director, Jim Fatsis, to give a brief overview of these orders that we have in front of us tonight. Go right ahead, you have the floor.
Good evening, council, and good evening, President Demona. Through you. The four orders that you just wrote before you tonight, perfunctory, as you see up on the screen and you have in your packets, that is city-owned land. On the left-hand side, you can see the roadway, which is Hannan Parkway. As you go underneath the, the city-owned land, you are looking at the General James McConville Way, and as you look at the Cross Parkway that comes, you know, across from the General's Bridge, you are looking at General Joseph Dunford Drive as a layout. These are all roadways that have, in fact, been named. The one that also, the first one, is the discontinuance of a portion of the Parking Way from Walter Hannan Parkway to a dead end. Basically, that's in the middle, and it ends sort of at the future MOB site. So, as I said, they're perfunctory. They seek to have the new roadways acknowledged as public ways. They've been given a description and layout, as you can see, and they have already been utilized. Once approved by this body, they will be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So basically, what we're looking for this body to do tonight is to accept these roadways and to discontinue the one roadway, and that's basically it. So-
Fatsis, at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak, you can, in support, Opposition Recorded, please sign in the back area on the sheet table in the back of the chambers that we have back there. Anyone want to come forward? We'll also limit this to four minutes as well for public comment.
Well, again, not so much a comment upon the proposal, but a question. What is the city planning to do to allow egress for the parking lot that services Petco and the storage unit? If you're going to close off that roadway that basically was the feeder to get you to the IHOP, that got you the IHOP parking lot, which allowed you to go under the, I can't think of his name, Paul, Paul what's-his-name's Bridge, to get to that area. I know there's parking on the Petco building, but you've got an egress problem for the people who want to use the storage facility, and I think Mr. Fatsis could probably answer that without too much trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Well, it's not a back-and-forth, just-
There will be a pass-through under the bridge, as it currently exists, and it'll be coming from the site that you see up there. And of course, there is also egress behind the building for tractor-trailer trucks, which is currently in place.
Thank you for your input. Any other comments from the public? Clerk of Committee has received any, no written correspondence at this line? Okay. Seeing no further public comment, I will close this public hea- Seeing no further public comment, I will close this public hearing at 7:04 PM. I would like to call the Quincy City Council meeting of Monday, December 4th, 2023. It is now 7:04 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Aaron Geronico, Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Devine.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Dubana.
Present.
You have eight members. You have a quorum.
Eight members. We have a quorum. Please stand if you can, and if we can get a moment of silence, and please use it as
And turn to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged or permissible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Number one, 2023-121, an appropriation for $3,255,457 to community preservation.
Eric Mason first. I know that's the first item on the agenda, and which item is that?
He does the recap.
Before we get into the agenda, I would do a little recap of Eric Mason, and go right ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, council. And I will be covering the community preservation fund council order, so we're all on the same page. So as we're all used to at this point, this time of year, we did a tax rate recap. I'm going to go through some orders of tax relief, in addition to some explanations of major metrics that are within the tax recap itself. So first, let's start with some overview statistics. The tax levy for FY '24, given if the body accepts the current council orders, will be $290,891,947.57. And that will result in, as Madam Sessi described, an $11.27 residential tax increase per 1,000, and a commercial tax rate of $22.45 per 1,000. This reflects the median home value increase of approximately $40,000, or 7% from what we saw year over year. And that also included $6.9 million in new growth, which is, again, as Madam Sessi can describe it better than I, but that's quite, quite an impressive new growth figure, even given the size of the city. I think important of note is that we saw a $3.1 million increase in revenue from the commercial tax levy. And that equates about a 6%. I think those two statistics are fairly important, the $6.9 million in new growth. That reflects new construction that didn't exist the previous year, that's now pushing money back towards the tax levy. So these aren't improvements to homes. These are brand-new construction projects. And having $6.9 million in new growth does really, doesn't really, it does not just talk very strongly about the local economic environment where these large investments can be made, but it also speaks upon future revenue that's coming in. That $6.9 million is not just for FY '24, it's for FY '25, '26, and so on. The commercial levy growth, when I first started the city a little less than 10 years ago, it was difficult to find opportunities for commercial levy growth. And I think it's, it's quite impressive to finally start seeing large, large numbers like $3.1 million coming into the city. And commercial growth is, as somebody who grew up in a small-business family in Quincy, as we all know, small businesses, everything from small businesses to large businesses, really do provide not just economic incentives through employment, but also through paying more tax dollars. Overall, the city saw a valuation increase of $1.8 billion, or 8.7%. Before we jump into tax relief, the orders that are in front of the body, kind of wanted to contextualize that about what the city normally does for tax relief. I know there's certain people who, this is the number-one council order they watch, council meeting, or this or the budget. The city usually provides about $7.5 million in tax relief. Last year, we had a pretty pronounced tax relief package that was really a product of the post-COVID evaluations coming through. In this, so this year, we're stepping down a little bit from that. We're looking at about $13.9 million in overall tax relief. Last year was $19.7 million. So over the last, over the last five years, essentially since the start of the pandemic, the city's provided about $53 million in tax relief to the, to the average homeowner. In terms of council orders, I'm going to go through each one that's in front of you, and I'm happy to take questions at the end on it. The first one is the CPA Fund. That is one that DLS requires us to approve at the beginning of the year. I know there's several councillors on this body who have either been on the CPC or have projects in front of the CPC. It's a great organization, and this council order allows us to fund them through the project cycle that we'll see in January, February, March, and April, and will eventually be back in front of the body during budget season. DIF debt, there's $8.8 million coming through for, to be transferred from the general fund to the DIF fund. This is required under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40-Q. It's, it's just a, just a transfer that has to be reflected and staying within lines of state law. We've already appropriated these funds. These funds were part of the original budgetary appropriation for FY '24, so there aren't new funds being appropriated. Tax relief from stabilization, the city has, the city has submitted all its paperwork for its free cash approval. We're still waiting to have it approved. We'll have somewhere around $1.1 million in free cash just solely from the operational budget, then an additional $3.9 million will be coming in from the textile sales the city did earlier this year, for a total of roughly $5 million. As we wait for DLS to approve our free cash calculation, we'll be, this proposal is to use what would be our free cash, take out of stabilization, similar to what we did last year, and then bring it back in front of the body with the free cash, as we certified. Additionally, we're looking to remove the $5.25 million pension obligation budgetary line. Currently, the pension is fully funded. It's actually about 101% funded, according to the latest Parac report. So it becomes a, I'd say, an administrative question, I mean, a council question about if the pension's fully funded, and we have some pension stabilization reserve, do we incur an additional $125 on the tax bill? When the pension's already funded, do we push that cost onto the current taxpayer if the pension's already fully funded? That's for deliberation of the body. And then an OPED transfer. Not surprisingly, our retiree health insurance has been quite aggressive over the last three years, given the health environment. This, according to most modeling, this is kind of the last big jump we'll see in retiree healthcare costs, based on some annualized projections. So this $1.5 million council order will provide relief for a, I would describe it as a temporary cost, a short-term cost. One of the terms you've heard frequently tonight is median versus average. Average is, as a statistician, I'll tell you, average is a useless statistic barring standard deviation. But this is a, median is what's heavily pushed by the state, and it is a better metric. Average is just the sum divided by number of observations. Medium is the same number of observations above and below a number. So median means the 50%, 50% of homes are below this value, 50% of homes are above this value. That much better reflects the realities of Quincy. The last, the city, this is not unprecedented. The city's used median for this analysis before, even before the state was heavily pushing it. We used it during the last big real estate boom in the city of Quincy, because we saw these, what's referred to as, what's referred to as right skew. And we have some charts that show this. As I included this example, that if you have five homes, you can have the same median with very, very different averages, but it doesn't change the overall distribution to the vast majority of homes. Most of property tax value increases, and property tax bill increases this year are driven by what we call right-side observations. In other words, we see many, many homes that are approaching the million, the above-million-dollar mark. We certainly saw some statistics in Squandam showing that above-million-dollar average. And that's great. I mean, that's good, that home values are worth a lot. That's, that's a good thing. But that does skew it from the, you know, your normal house in Quincy. So it's better to reflect the statistics based on percentiles, which we're going to get into that on the next, in the few next slides. So the median single-family home increase is going to be $418. But what does that mean? All right, it means that 25% of homes are the 25th percentile, which is approximately 8.23% of homes, a little less than 700 total homes, are going to have an increase of about $180. It means that 65% of homes are going to have an increase that's less than $418. Approximately 70%, 72% of homes will see their taxes increase far less than that $418. In fact, about 72% of homes will see their taxes increase by $420 or less. What this does show, and this is, I think this is quite interesting, 96% of homes are, 97% of homes are below $630,000. And we saw those, those neighborhood averages that the Sessi presented, and that should really show you how a lot of the skew is caused by homes that are more expensive to, that are more expensive. So we see them on the right side of this observation curve. And this is really, really what that example is that we're seeing here, is that we, we have a lot of homes that are far above the median that pull that statistic to the right. And at the end of the day, the calculation for the residential rate very heavily relies on just dividing the total number of parcels by total valuation. And so this breaks it actually down by fifths of percentile. And as you can see, the median, we have the mean and the median down here. And, you know, this looks like fairly normal distribution with a very, very, you know, strong left, left skew. But I think this kind of really shows the picture. This green line is what the distribution of home values were last year. The blue line is distribution of home values this year. That is very pronounced. In fact, we have a measurement in statistics called a t-test that basically tells us how different two lines are, and it tells us if these two lines are really different. And this has the strongest statistical significance you can have for a data set to show the two lines are very, very different. So that's why the median, when you have a, the green line is more, you would call that Pozen distribution, that's more something where averages are a stronger metric. When you have this, this very, very strong left skew, this is where percentiles become very, very important, because if you just simply rely on an average, it's going to be very, very far to the right of what your median is. And we can see that on this chart, where the just gotten nudity break is to the right of the median value by a fairly substantial amount. So as we move forward, if we look at the Quincy home value increase over the past, over the past 10 years, we can see that, you know, homes have had a fairly significant and robust increase. And even after COVID, we still saw some strong increases, but this year has been exceptionally pronounced. Kind of makes sense. We do expect to see about a one-year lag in this factor if we compare to HPI, so we're kind of right in line with those. And this final slide is tax bills as a percent of property value, as a percent of income. Basically, what we see is that property value is relative to how much the property costs and what the individuals in the home are making, has actually been on the decline. So while property values are increasing, they do seem to be staying in line with what real wages are for the area. It's not a, it's not a very large marginal difference, at 1.4%, approximately 1.3%, but it's still significant, significant note. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, councilors, what we're going to do is we're going to get into our agenda items. We have nine agenda items. I'm going to put into Rule 10, which is the debate limitation to 15 minutes. It will allow all council members 15 minutes, and then you will also, everybody will get a chance to speak, and then you will have a five-minute on the back end. And we'll go into our agenda items, and please pertain to the particular agenda item that we have in front of us. So Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
2023-121, an appropriation for $3,255,457 to community preservation accounts.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move approval on this motion. This is a motion to, to fund the Community Preservation Act, which comes as a separate item that comes in every year at this time, and this is to approve it. So I'd like to move, a motion to move approval on that.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. Seconded by Counsel Devine. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number two, 2023-122, an appropriation for $8,829,906.56 for short-term and long-term debt for District Improvement Fund.
Well, DIF, thank you. I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is mandated by state law. It's, it's from the Quincy Square District, and this has to be moved over in accordance with state law. This is part of the DIF fund that was set up by several other city councils. So I'd like to move approval on this.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. Seconded by Counsel Devine. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney. Go right ahead.
If I could, Mr. Mason, could I just ask a couple of questions here? I know we do this every year. Last year, I think the DIF was 4.7 in the budget. In this year, it's 8.8, correct?
Correct, Counsel, yes.
And then also, it's, where does the, so the appropriation, where's the, just for clarification for anybody that's watching at home, for transparency's sake, where does the 8.8 million dollars come from? Is that coming from the, from the sinking fund, or is it?
Yeah, so it's, the DIF fund is, sinking fund's a type of fund. The DIF is going into the sinking fund. It's paid for by future tax revenues from the downtown improvement district.
So last year, I think, and I checked with the auditor today, and I might need the auditor to help me with this, I think last year, we, we moved 4.7 million dollars over there, but it looks like there was some extra. Could you?
Overhead.
Thank you. Last year at this time, there was a council order before the council for $4,780. And that was what was moved to the general fund?
And then what was, was there any money left over in the, the short-term, long-term?
Oh, in the, in the general fund budget? I believe there was, but I believe what happens is, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you're, when we're doing the budget for, I'll just say for fiscal '24. Within the debt service budget, there is that, in this case, $8.8 million already budgeted. And then, at this time of the year, when it's time to set the tax rate, we take the estimated revenues from the DIF district, and we move that from, from the DIF district. We move that revenue into the general fund, and in this case, it would be the long-term and short-term debt.
Right. So then, Eric, so I just guess the question is, is that what we're moving over, will there be money left over at the end of 2024? Just, and what happens if there is, like last year?
So that budget, that line item in the budget is for all short-term debt for the city, not just DIF?
Yeah.
So money left over laid to the DIF, we only move, we only move over the exact amount that DIF's going to be charged. Any left over that's in the general fund, which is usually the product of asymmetrical borrowing, especially with short-term rates, that falls to free cash at the end of the year.
And I guess the reason why I'm asking this is because this is one of those things that, when I would talk about transparency, and yes, I did talk about transparency a lot, but this is something that's not really discussed here, whether it's at the council or brought to us from, from the administration, to kind of talk about that sinking fund and where the money's coming from and how it's being spent. So we're being asked to move over 8.8 million dollars, because we spent 8.8 million dollars for the short-term, long-term for DIF, just for the DIF. This is just identifying for the DIF, to pay for the DIF, paying for itself, because that's what it's supposed to do. But really, we're not seeing the details of what was being.
This is budgets that were approved under DIF 1, 2, 3, 4.
I understand. But what I'm saying is there's no, there's no audit, there's no transparency, there's no reporting, there's no reporting of it. So, but thank you very much.
Any of the councilors? So a motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. We have a seconded by Counsel Devine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
2023-123, an appropriation for $2,209,572.24 to various FY '24 accounts for prior year at Humberson and various accounts.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
I would, I would make a, I'm pretty sure I know what this is, but I think I'm going to be asking Eric a question. This money, is this the money that comes when you, every year, when you go through your POs and you make sure what was not spent, and it, this is just money going back into the general fund?
Yes, Counsel, this is probably one of those emails I sent you and your department had that ruined your day.
So I remember getting these, and we would do it, and this, so this actually goes into the general fund. Will this help lower the tax rate for the homeowners?
Approximately $52, yes.
Okay. I would make a motion to pass.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. Seconded by Counsel Devine. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
Just a, just a note here. So the appropriation for $2.2 million, that's going to lower the tax rate, that's great. That's, that's perfectly great. It's coming from encumbrances in various accounts. And then what you say here is upon the Director of Municipal Finances, that it will go into various accounts, it'd be transferred to the prior fiscal incumbents. So we don't know where the money's coming from. It's just, and it's a combination of 2.2. So incumbences, is it contracts, or is it?
It's incumbences, any amount of money held from a previous fiscal year forward, going all the way back to five fiscal years. Approximately, I think there's about 700 of them.
Yeah. How often do we do that? Do we go back and take a look at those incumbences that we don't? Do we do it every year, or is it?
Yes, we vote on it every year.
Yeah, it's, it's not there every year. This is, we don't usually have $2.2 million every year, so.
Last year, we had 1.805.
Yeah. So anyway, so we usually, again, for the sake of transparency, it would be nice to have, because it's just basically saying from various accounts from prior years, just to understand where the money is coming to, to be able to add that up. Thank you.
I'm real quick for clarifications, if Madam Auditor or Eric Mason could, could verify. Is for every million dollars, is it $25 is the factor?
Correct.
Is that where you get the $52 from? 2.2 million?
$25.83.
$25 per million. Okay. That's for clarification. I'd like to recognize Counsel Devine. Go right ahead. 1.8 or 1.1.8 we got last year?
Yes, 1.85 million.
Pretty close to what it was last year.
Yes, and the year before that, it was about $2,100,000.
Okay. Thank you. Any of the councilors? So a motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan and seconded by Counsel Devine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Taborah.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2023-124, an appropriation for $4,984,854.59 for stabilization to reduce tax rate.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to, this is money coming out of the stabilization fund. This is going to be used to lower the tax rate. So understanding that when we get the free cash, this money will be going back in the stabilization fund. So I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. Seconded by Counsel Devine. Any councilors on the discussion? Just for clarification, if I could, Madam Auditor, what do we currently have in stabilization? And what does it make it at for the 4.984 motion tonight?
Currently, there's $12,365,058 in the stabilization fund. And if you take out the $4,984,854.59, there will be $7,380,203.45 left in that account.
Thank you very much, Madam Auditor.
You're welcome.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney. Go right ahead.
What's the recommendation for the stabilization accounts today? I know we're, we, we'll reimburse it when we get the free cash in, but for the city our size, what's the recommendation?
City, it depends who you ask. If you look at S and P, they usually talk about 5% to 10% levels of unreserved fund balance. Nobody, actually, it's actually very uncommon to talk about free cash or stabilization when you talk about rating and auditing, because those are GASB statistics. And the private sector doesn't use GASB, they use GAAP. So from a GAAP perspective, your unreserved fund balance should be, for a city our size, approximately $30 million.
Approximately what?
Excuse me?
I didn't hear you.
Oh, unreserved fund balance should be about $30 million.
Thank you.
Any of the councilors? So we have a motion made by Counsel Phelan to approve, and we have a seconded by Counsel Devine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Taborah.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, please.
Number five, 2023-125, an appropriation for $5,250,000 from reserve for appropriation, POB reserve.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This money is coming from a reserve account for pensions, and we're already at 100% funded. So this money will be put back in to the, to the general fund, if I'm not mistaken. And this will go to lower the tax rate again. So I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. Seconded by Counsel Devine. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
Again, Mr. Mason, this, you'll be done with me soon enough, so. So this is just, this was just in case we didn't make the 100% qualifications for the investments for the pension obligation bond, correct?
Yes, I mean, the discussion part of the funding package, and it's not tied to the bond, bonds, reserve bonds aren't, were actually something really practiced in Massachusetts or the US in general. So yes, this is something that we deliberately put in the budget. If there is an issue, for example, higher than expected normal cost, if there's an unfunded position that occurs, or in conversations with the retirement board that there's something where additional reserve would be needed, it's there and available for us.
Is it, is it strictly for the funding of the pension obligation bond? Like, when you say the retirement board, if the retirement board's not making their investments, would that be something that could be for anything?
Actually, interesting note on that. So it's not tied to the pension bond. It's actually tied to the pen, what would be our normal pension cost. We can't pay any extra less into the pension obligation bond. It's a fixed, it's a fixed annual payment. So this would be if suddenly the pension saw like a 3% decline in value.
Right.
This could be used to offset any additionally generated unfunded liability. But given our current reserves and the pension's current position of overfunded, you're probably looking at like a three to four standard deviation event that would even begin to approximate that.
So then we go back to the, so that's separate, so that's separately a question. We are supposed to save, put into a pension, I forget what it's called, the, the pension stabil, like, stabilization, stabilization account for the pension that they, when we took the bond out, they wanted you to have $30 million by 2029. Where does that money go? And when, how are we investing in that?
Where does, like, where would the money go if you made a pension obligation deposit?
Yeah, so we have, I think you, there's, it's set up a PSA account.
Pension civilization account. IRS Regulation 151.
And right now, I think there's $5.7 million in there. Is that the one that we have to, you have to, to eventually get to $30 million?
Yeah, that, that's where those funds would go. But it's proportionated, like, it's not like $30 million. Because if you had $30 million and you reach the fully funded date, then what happens to that $30 million? It's supposed to be proportionated to what your current exposed liability on the pension is to your funding date. So it's really two actuary tables, a UALL table, which right now is like 101 point some odd percent funded. And then there's your propensity for risk of those invested dollars as they go forward. That's the, that's really what pension stabilization account is supposed to be. Yes.
So what I'm asking, though, is, taking away all those, you have $5.7 million in the account right now. Is that, that's something that the city put into when we, when we took out the pension obligation bond? Do we invest into that line as well, or is that something that we do separately?
No, we wouldn't. The pension obligation bond, because doesn't, the only cash in pension obligation bond goes directly to the retirement system.
I understand, no, I understand where the money goes to. I'm talking about the stabilization account.
Yeah, the stabilization account comes from taxation. And that's where those funds get put, in a separate account. So right now, there's $5.7 million in there, and there's an additional pending $5.25 million the body's authorized as part of that 424 budget. That could be deposited in there unless the body today votes to retract that, and it saves approximately 100 and.
So basically, if we, if we were to keep it in the budget, that $5 million would go into the pension stabilization account?
Yes, correct.
So, but instead of doing that, because we're meeting 100% obligations of the investments for the pension, we're artificially lowering the taxes by this $5 million that we budgeted in?
I wouldn't say artificially lowering, because I would assume that there is a recurring deficit related to it. The body could opt next year, there's not like an ongoing current expense, there's not a contractual expense, like, if a union contract, or like a health insurance expense.
But next year, you could be doing the same thing, putting $5 million aside for, and to see where you're standing and do the same thing.
The city council would cut that. Yes, correct.
But we do have a spending problem, but thank you very much.
Any of the councilors? So a motion made by Counsel Phelan to approve. We have a seconded by Counsel Devine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Taborah.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, please.
2023-126, an appropriation for $1,500,000 from OPEB, OPEB, stabilization to pay retirees' health insurance costs, reducing the FY '24 budget healthcare line.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is money coming from the OPEB, which is retirees' medical health insurance costs in a stabilization fund. And it's moving from there to the general budget to reduce the current tax rate. So I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. Seconded by Counsel Devine. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Mahoney, you have the floor.
Okay. Again, Mr. Mason, I guess I'm confused, because when, are we doing this to, to lower the tax rate, or are we doing this because we had extraordinary costs in the healthcare line? Just curious.
Not extraordinary cost in healthcare line. We have a disproportionate increase in retiree health insurance expenditure over the last three years, which, we've had COVID, so I don't think it's a surprise by anybody, which disproportionately affected people in the retirement bracket, especially related to the, a lot of people currently, who are retirees eligible for OPEB, are pre the Medicare, Medicare Contribution Act.
Okay. So last year, when we lowered the tax rate, we took $3 million out of our healthcare line because we had extra money. So this year, we don't have the money, or we do have the money for the healthcare, but we're taking it from OPEB, which is also another area, just like pension obligations, that we have to be careful with because they are, it's an unfunded pension obligation.
Nothing to do with the pension obligation bond.
It's an unfunded area that if we're not careful with, with OPEB, you could get in trouble as well. So we're taking $1.5 million out of the stabilization account to lower the tax rate. Again, spending is an issue, and we're lowering it this way. Thank you very much.
Any of the councilors? So a motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. We have a seconded by Counsel Devine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Taborah.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number seven, 2023-127, adopt and residential factor of 87.8749 for FY '24.
Just a little correction, 87.8749. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes. I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan. Do you have this one?
Residential tax rate, I'm sorry. I just had a, something came up with the auditor, and I, okay. We had a, we had a public hearing this evening on the residential tax rate. We looked at it. I first would just like a, a motion to, to adopt, and then I have a few words.
Sure. So a motion to adopt the tax rate, or a motion to approve the tax rate, and seconded by, of a second, seconded by Counsel Devine, and on the discussion, on the motion, go right ahead, Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Being this is my last year on the council, I, I've seen this rate going all the way back to the 1980s. It always has been an issue for discussion. I was here when we raised it from 125 to 150. Recently, and I believe we're all the way up to, was it 175? Is Eric there? Where'd he go? Okay. So this is a rate the council has always looked. It unfortunately is one of the few things we can do to lower the tax rate and, and keep the residential low. I'm also an owner of commercial property in the city, so it gets, that gets hit hard. But I think the options we have at this point is, do, what do we choose? Would we choose zero, and then everyone would get a huge tax increase? Or do we offset it with a higher rate for commercial and industrial? And it's one of those balancing acts that the council has had to do for, for years, going all the way back to the 1980s. And it's a rate where I, I hear people, you know, the taxes and some people who are living in their house, they're living in, but right now, this is what we have before us. We're doing the residential and the commercial tax rate. And if we don't adopt the rate that we just got, we're going to have a situation where we'll have a huge tax increase, and that's something I don't want to do. So unfortunately, I know some of the people had some other things tonight, and some of those will be issues that will need to be taken up by the city council later on. But right now, what is before us is, is the tax rate that we have. And I'm for adopting a higher tax rate for commercial, business, and industrial property to keep the residential rate as low as we possibly can. So I, I moved approval on this, and thank you to my colleagues, but I'll leave it at that and let the council speak.
Any of the councilors? Any of the councilors? I'd like to recognize Counsel Devine.
I agree with Counsel Phelan. In Ward Four alone, this year, we've had quite a few businesses come in and open up. So, the, I think the, the higher burden that the commercial is picking up is not shying people away from coming to Quincy. I think we might have, I wish we still had Eric, Mr. Mason here still, but I think, I don't know if, I think we had like 20% increase, or a million dollars come into the city last year in commercial. So, as long as we keep that fine line that we're walking, to keep it up nice and high, so that we don't scare commercial people away, but at the same time, save our constituents money, is what I'm looking for. So, thank you.
I'd like to recognize Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know Mr. Mason, I think, had to leave, but he did a nice job laying it out, as well as Colleen Healy and her staff. I think one thing that, you know, over the years, up here, and the administrations that are up here, as Counsel Phelan stated, it is a balancing act. I think they've done a great job. I think the services in the city, when you look around to see what we have here, and how it's really turned the corner overall, I think people are pleased. In the city, people would love to get, you know, everyone liked their taxes to go away. But the money that's well-spent, I think here in the city, is in the right places. And I think that the, the home increase, when you look at the numbers and you talk 73%, will be 420 or lower. That's a, that's a good, solid number. If it was the other way around, I think we'd all have issues with that. If it was a higher number, if the 70% was going to be on the higher end, but it's on the lower end, which is a good thing. And kudos to Mr. Mason and the administration, and all involved, working it year in and year out, so that we, we have a good answer here, most of the time, when it comes to setting the tax rate and establishing some of the other protocols that go on here in the city. So, thank you.
Thanks to Counsel McCarthy. Any of the councilors? Just, just looking back on history here, in 2015, we had 111 inches of snow out there. Along with Counsel McCarthy and Counsel Mahoney, we were on the school committee, and the very next year, I came up to the council and they said, okay, how are we gonna pay for this 100 million, I mean, $12 million that we actually had to move all the snow around here? So, I remember this council coming in, I know someone mentioned Counsel Palmucci. We had to really move some monies around, like we kind of did tonight, with monies being used to, you know, to lower that tax, you know, increase on all the burden on the city taxpayers. I think the biggest issue that we had coming forward was the pension that we bonded. In the first couple of years of that, is a big lump sum on the front end. And tonight, talking with Mr. Walker over the last week, Chief of Staff, as well as the mayor, about how do we get this tax rate obviously down? How do we use some monies at different accounts to not put such a huge burden on the taxpayers of the city? We were roughly looking at a very big amount. And tonight, when we hopefully can adopt this residential factor, it'll really help out the taxpayers. I know, you know, doing the bond originally, over the last two years, it's the front end that really hits us, and we're on that front-end area. So, I know we had to, over the years of being up here, since my eighth year up here in the council, we've had, we've had a lot of different, we've had flooding situation in 2018, that we had seawall repairs, that we've done, we've come a long way with inches of snow, unfortunately, going into the winter season and floodings. So, we've had some, some curveballs up against us. So, I think everybody's council members, I want to thank you for all your help and work over the last year with the budget, and looking up to this residential factor here that we have moving forward. So, any of the councilors? Seeing none, we have a motion to adopt and approve made by Counsel Phelan. We have a seconded by Counsel Devine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, 2023-128, adopting percentages of local tax by each class of real and personal property for 2024.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is adopting for the real property and the the commercial and the industrial property, as a way to, to lower the residential rate, and have them pay a higher rate. So I would make a motion to approve, and then I have a question afterwards.
Yep. Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. On the motion, for the discussion, go right ahead.
I see Eric walked back in the room, so I'm not gonna let you off yet.
Sorry, Counsel, I had to go grab an insulin.
I guess a question I had was on, what percentage, and maybe this is one for Colleen, I'm not sure, what percentage business, does this business, commercial, and that pay right now? What is that? Is that 175 now?
For, I'm sorry, the, this is, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, the shift is max to 1.75.
It's at the max rate we can do by state law, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're doing it, and obviously, business is going up, so, not that, I know some business people don't want to pay this, but it's like anything else with your taxes, it's something that needs to be paid. And it does lower the residential rate. So sometimes, when you want to see commercial go in, there's a reason why we want to see commercial go in, because it helps offset the residential rate. So, so I'm gonna be happy to vote for this tonight, and I, I was here when it was all the way down to 125. So this will be my 14th tax classification vote, and I don't think, at any of the public hearings, anyone has totally understood it from the time I was here to there. But you guys try to do a better, you do a good presentation, but it is one of these things that is not very easy to understand. But it comes down to, by doing a higher business, and commercial, and industrial rate, it ends up lowering the, the tax rate on the residential side. So, that's the main reason why I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Any of the councilors? I'd like to recognize Counsel Devine. Go right ahead.
All right, don't sit down yet. The, we, we had a good increase in commercial this year, right?
Yes, correct, 6%.
How much?
6%.
6%. And how much is that in money?
$3.1 million.
Yeah, that's great. That's it. I just wanted to clarify that. I made a mistake. I said something wrong, so I'm glad you corrected it. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
Question. So, when you're doing the tax increases, Eric, and your, your 50th percentile is, the home value is 576, but in Colleen's single tax rate, her average home was 616. I guess I'm just asking, how did you get to your 50? I'm just, I know you went through this explanation, but Colleen's packet has it at 616, and you have it as, the medium is 576. The difference there is that when it gets reported in the paper tomorrow, the average family homeowners will have an increase, meaning anybody that's house is worth $576,000 will have an increase of $418 of their taxes versus the 616 that Colleen was reporting in her package, which would be closer to $500 for the average, and that's the average home.
No, it's the median.
It's a median.
They're very, very statistically different. You said 16, you said 616,000. It's right there. 616,000. If you notice this one, this, that was brought up, is about increase, projected increases. Not all home grows, not all home cohorts grow at the same rate.
I understand, but usually, the two of those, usually, your presentation and Colleen's presentation match. That's usually...
They do. It's 616,000 median, right there.
No, I understand. I'm saying, when you're doing the average, you're saying the median is 576. So, to look like it's 420 as opposed to 500, it's, it's fine. I'm just, they're two different, there's two different presentations. I know, see. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm all set. Thanks.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Kane.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, there was a, a concept brought up earlier about classification of residential versus commercial. So I was just sitting here trying to see under mass general law how these terms are defined. And so just for, for clarity's sake, it looks like residential is classified as used for human habitation, and then commercial is for business purposes, commercial, retail, trade, service, et cetera. So, I think the general assumption is that large residential multifamily properties should be subject to commercial tax. At least, that was the perspective earlier.
I would, I would defer to the...
Yeah, sorry, Colleen.
I mean, that's, that's something that the city council...
Right, yes.
That's not something that, that's not something that the city council...
No, we can't change, yeah, we can't change that, and that's an important point also. But, most of those businesses, so a residential multifamily property like an Avalon or a High Point...
They're paying a residential tax rate.
Yes, because that's the property they're operating.
Correct.
However, they are businesses. They're probably LLCs, or partnerships, or whatever, domiciled, whether in Massachusetts or in Delaware, subject to state and federal taxes at a business level. So we don't tax businesses, we don't tax an individual business based on its business operations. We tax businesses based on the operation of their property.
Correct. The way the property is classified.
Correct. Yeah, and I just want to clarify that.
And assessors always value in use.
Right. So those businesses are being taxed as businesses, it's just not at the local level.
Correct.
Yes, okay. So, yes, because LLCs, there's, the business tax, state and federal, okay, and residential tax, real property. So I just want to put that out. So, the conversation, I think that was, it was suggested that counselors prior had, you know, made possible recommendations to change that, but that's not within our immediate purview.
No, that would have to be a change to Massachusetts general law.
Correct. And if we wanted to make dramatic changes to the tax rate, we would have to do that through the budget. And this is, again, I think Counsel Phelan alluded to this, that every year, this is a conversation that happens over and over again. It's not a very simple thing to digest or understand. But just for clarity's sake, if we wanted to make substantial structural changes to the budget, which is within our purview, that's where the magic could potentially happen, where there's a dramatic reduction. Otherwise, we could also focus on continuing to attract different types of businesses here, that would then generate different types of economic growth through the tax base. So, I just wanted to round that out, because it's a very interesting concept in theory, but in reality, that is what it is. So, thank you.
Okay.
The councilors. While I have you, Colleen, just on the new growth fiscal year 2024, we had some completed projects in our packet here.
Yep.
231 Hancock Street, 355 mixed-use building. So that came on the tax record to be taxed, is that correct?
Correct. So, you have to remember that assessors are always reflecting, you know, based off an assessment date. So, you know, for a fiscal year, FY '24, it's based on the assessment date as of June 30. So sometimes, something could be done right now, but that's not going to be reflected until the following year.
Sure. And is that the case for 100 Whitwell Street, which is the 465 units? I know they just started to lease it in.
Correct.
Would that be put on for next year?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be huge.
We picked up a portion of the value for this year, and the remainder will be picked up next year.
As well as 189 Hancock, which is 255 units, and 1200 Hancock Street was 135 units. Obviously, we look at new growth. Of our 351 communities, where do we rank for the new growth? Do you have that number, where we are?
I don't have it with me, but I could definitely get you guys it. Yep.
Okay.
I mean, I know we rank, we rank always in the top 10 of, of every different category that, you know, the state ranks communities.
I know in the last few years, we were up at like number four. So we were right in the mix of top five. So, that is very important, that we have continued new growth to offset taxpayers as well. But these big units coming on, obviously, we want to get the tax roll going, and move it into helping the taxpayers out in the city. So, thank you. Any of the councilors? So we have a motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan. We have a seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number nine, 2023-129, order authorizing abandonment of rights of real estate for Lennox Street.
I'd like to recognize Counsel McCarthy.
Yeah, just to give a little Reader's Digest on this, this is property at 108 Lennox Street that was subdivided. There is a, an old, Brighton Street is on some of our old paperwork that was going to be extended. Brighton Street runs off of Winter, but it never happened. It's all wetlands in there, and the street was never continued, but it's still on the deed. What this does here, with the help of the Solicitor's Office, cleans up the property, so the, the gentleman down there can go ahead and have his deed clear of everything and, and put up his home. So, it's just a little housekeeping down in Housneck, on 108 Lennox.
Ward one?
Ward one.
Okay. So a motion to approve, motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Liang. On the motion?
No, just really quickly, the only question I had on it was, why now? And you answered it with your Reader's Digest, so that's all. Thanks, Counselor.
What was that?
No, I was just saying that. That was my question on it, was going to try to find out why now tonight, and you already led with it with your Reader's Digest. I just thought it was funny, and it was very clear, and I appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you.
Any of the councilors on the discussion? So a motion made by Counsel McCarthy, and seconded by Counsel Liang. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Does that complete our agenda items, Madam Clerk?
It does, thanks.
Yes, it does. Okay, thank you. Approval of previous meeting minutes of November 20th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Phelan. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Communication and reports from mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Madam Clerk, do we have a utility?
We do. Utility request to refer to Public Works Committee for Schedule and in Advertising for rate of location, Verizon, Broad Street, and Field Street.
Okay. Any other correspondence for this? Unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Any of the councilors? Reports of committees. I think we have a few. I'd like to recognize Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I have some traffic requests that I need to get some positive recommendations on. There's quite a few. I'll try to be accurate as I go down the list, but I'll start with 2023-58, add tow zone 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM on the west side of Quaterdeck Road. In the form of a motion.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Right ahead.
2023-059, add no parking on the east side of Quaterdeck Road.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-060, add tow zone 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM on the west side of Don Street. Positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation. Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-061, add no parking on the east side of Don Street. Positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation. Motion approved made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this particular motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-062, add no parking on both sides of Yadon Lane. Positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-063, add no parking on both sides of Palmer Street from the road route to Taffrail Road.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-064, add tow zone 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM on the odd side of Taffrail Road. Positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation. Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any, any opposed? Seeing none, the ayes have it.
2023-065, add no parking on the even side of Taffrail Road. Positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation. Motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-066, add no parking on the even side of Fighead Lane.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy.
Positive recommendation.
Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-067, add tow zone 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM on the south side of Quadrant Circle. Positive recommendation.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any, any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-068, add no parking on the north side of Quadrant Circle. Positive recommendation.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-069, add no parking on the odd side of Sexton Circle. Positive recommendation.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-070, add tow zone 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM on the even side of Sexton Circle. Positive recommendation.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Finally, 2023-071, add a handicap parking at 26 Hawthorne Street.
Okay, motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I also have some recommendations for the items that were held prior tonight at the public hearing. I'll go down the, the list. These are the streets that were discussed by Mr. Fatsis early on. Looking for positive recommendation on all of them. 2023-111, the discontinuance of a portion of Parking Way from Walter Hannah Parkway to the dead end. Positive recommendation.
I have a motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. We need a roll call on this. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
2023-112, acceptance of the General James McConville Way layout as a public right-of-way. Positive recommendation.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
2023-113, acceptance of Walter J. Hannah Parkway layout from Parking Way to the former Ross Way as a public right-of-way. Positive recommendation.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And 2023-114, acceptance of the General Joseph F. Dunford Drive layout as a public right-of-way. Positive recommendation. right-of-way. Positive recommendation.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonner.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
There you go. Thank you so much, Counsel McCarthy. Any other folks in the reports of committees? Counselors? Moving on. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Any counselors? Okay, real quick. Just want to go over this real quick. He never leaves the council. He keeps on putting stuff in here. Our judge, our former Ward Four Counsel, Counsel Palmucci, has put forward a scholarship fund. So he got ahold of me, and he said that anyone that is interested, that is a senior, senior at any school, could be any school in Quincy, whatever, is that he's putting forward up to $1,000. And it's a nonprofit that he formed, the C. Palmucci Fund in Honor of Carlo Palmucci, which is his great-grandfather who first came to Quincy from Italy 100 years ago. It'll also improve it with the city, anybody that's done any type of community activism work, that's a senior, that's looking to, you know, do, do the application, I guess I could call, just have to put it in by January 1st. And you could see myself or Jen, you can go through my email on the website, and it'll also allow all the counselors, if you want, somebody that you want to, that wants to represent to you, like a senior that comes through you, that wants to do the presentation in front of you, like, you know, a little bit of input from a counselor, like what they've done for, for community, community activism work throughout in the community. Could be Eagle Scouts, could be Girl Scouts, could be anything that you're looking to do. So I know a lot of the scholarships come in on the back end of the year, but this one could come in in the middle of the year if any of the, any of the kids are looking to further education. And I have the application in front of me, and I can give it to Jen. You can, anybody that wants to get the information out. And Counsel Palmucci was very excited to, to work on this. He's been talking to me for a couple of months now. He just presented this. I'll also give it to Jen. And counselors, if you want to let seniors know out there that are, that are looking to possibly get a scholarship, there's no amount that could be as many people as applicants, and he'll make a decision based on that. So you got about four weeks to get the application in, and they can work with a counselor. So, and it would be really nice, as I know we do a lot of presentations in here, we can present that in front of the council at a future date. So we could have the applicant that got the scholarship and come in here and do a presentation. We could do it at the beginning of the meeting. It would be really nice. So this is something that he's been talking to me about for a couple of months, and I thought I would, he's given me the application, and I'd like to bring it forward to let the public know, as well as Jen and, and everybody else. Feel free to give this information out. If you need the application, feel free to email it to you, and you can email it to any of these applicants. So let's get the word out. It'll be something that we can work on as a city council with, you know, prospective applicants that want to get a scholarship, up to $1,000. So it's a real nice gesture on his part. He never wants to leave the council. He's always got ideas. So this was a really nice deed that he's doing. Any other counselors for presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance? Motions, orders, and resolutions? Scheduling committee meetings and public hearings? Counsel McCarthy, we have an ordinance committee, oh, sorry, hold on. We have an ordinance committee coming in on Wednesday, December 13 at 6:30.
Sorry, I was asleep at the switch.
Yeah, Mr. President, December 13. I worked with the administration, with Mr. Walker, and tried to find a, a date that worked. It was pretty tough for us to get this in, but we had to go with Wednesday. It was the only day that seemed to work. So we'll have on there the, the zoning in regards to the MBTA and along with the LDA. So that'll be, I believe, at 7 o'clock on, I'm not sure, Jen, if it's 7 o'clock on Wednesday, but I, I think we'd like to go at 7. I know that there's a few things going on before that, and we need some, some people, some key people at our meeting, so.
Okay. So we'll go at 7 o'clock on Wednesday, December 13.
Yeah, thank you.
In the council chambers. Thank you. And you'll have your ordinance committee. Thank you, thank you for having us, Counsel McCarthy. And also, we have Monday, December 18. We have a few public hearings on the front end at 6:30, and then we go into our regular scheduled city council meeting at 6:50. And that will be our last meeting of the year. Calendar year, I guess I could say, December 18. Yes, go right ahead, Counsel Devine.
I forgot. I wanted to mention that on Saturday the night, Ward Four is going to be having a tree lighting at Shea Park, which is across from the Donut King and the Sly Fox. Santa will be coming at 5, and the fire truck, and we'll be having pizza, hot cocoa,